Love it. Hmm, I didn't see anything. I know I got a notification on the west end that you asked to get it. But I didn't get anything on Emory Valley Road. Is it in the packet? Is it? Okay, then I've got it here then. For some reason I wasn't... Oh, here it is. Sorry. I skipped over it. Oh, I guess we need to get started. Okay, alright. Get myself together here. I don't even have a gavel, but that's alright. That's okay, I'm alright. Oh, wrong agenda. Okay, here we go. Here we go. Okay, everyone, I'm gonna call to order the public hearing portion... Sorry. The public hearing portion of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners. We're gonna start this evening with a presentation. Ms. Renee Davis, she was not able to be with us tonight, but she did give some information to Commissioner Anderson, and he is going to read that for us. It's the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and we have a resolution for Tennessee... for Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, but rather than just read that, since that's in everybody's packet, if it's alright with you, I'd like to just read what Ms. Davis sent me about her personal experience, if that's alright with you. And this is from Renee Davis. She lives in Andersonville. Went to high school around the same... her and her husband both went to high school around the same time I did. They're a couple of years older. "Jason and I were married for 20 years. We have two beautiful children. I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to give a voice to suicide. He struggled with alcoholism for three years. After five times of going to rehab, I felt like the last one did it. I thought we had conquered the beast. After nine months of being sober, he relapsed. Unbeknownst to me, he had quit taking the medication that prevented cravings three weeks prior. This was a Sunday. I didn't realize that he had drank. Then Monday happened. He started calling me at work, and I instantly could by his voice tell that he was drinking. I came straight home. That's when I found out about the medication. That evening, he asked his father to come over. It ended in an altercation and Jason being arrested. I couldn't comprehend how the day had ended like this. I loaded up all the guns I thought we had and taken them to my sister's. I bonded him out on Tuesday. I made him sleep all day on Wednesday, trying to get him through withdrawals. They came back and were strong. Thursday, I was gonna be a good... was gonna be a good day. I left work early to take my 16-year-old daughter to get her driver's license. Once home, Jason started an argument with me, so I left. I went five minutes away to the post office. Then the kids started calling me. Parker is telling me he just went into the garage. That's where the guns and ammo were stored. I said, 'It's okay, there's only ammo, no guns.' Brooke calls me next. They heard a loud bang and the smoke alarms were going off. I thought to myself, 'What has he gotten into?' I went outside and was almost there. I told them to go outside and I was almost there. What I saw, no one should have to see. It has taken a lot to get to my current state two years out. I've also included what my son Parker wrote on September 1st this year." This is from her high school-aged son, Parker. "I was ready for another summer day spent under the sweltering sun, but then it happened, and suddenly I was in the after. Yellow caution tape enveloped our brick house in the woods, woods that were still reverberating from the shrieks of grief and sorrow that had been screamed by people whose faces were marked with tears and confusion. I sat in a car with the air conditioning blowing sweat off my face, and I had a perfect view of the after in our corner of the woods. Vehicles, the cop cars, the medical examiner's van, the SUV I viewed from, were all tightly packed into our driveway. I never thought death could penetrate the four walls of our house, our house in the woods. I never thought you'd be gone so soon. I never thought our family of four would become a family of three in the blink of an eye. And I never thought you'd drive the car that would eventually be mine. But on that unforgiving summer day, all those things happened, just minutes before the short and long hands of the clock met at 12. Two years later, I still live in the brick house in the woods, and as I sit here writing this, I can't help but think how much you've missed out on. I'm in the marching band. We have a new dog, and I now drive the car that would've been yours first. Every time I meet someone new, I hold my breath, crossing my fingers, that they don't ask, 'What do your parents do for work? I always want to say that you're 45 years old and that you still work at the same place you did for years, because in my mind, you're still here. In my mind, you're still mowing the lawn. In my mind, the coffee machine doesn't sit waiting to get used, because you still have your morning coffee in a ceramic mug with pictures of our family on it. But you're gone, and now Mom mows the lawn, and the coffee machine only gets used for hot chocolate when our house in the woods becomes a house in a snow globe. I never thought I would lose a parent at 14. Truthfully, I never thought I would check the widowed box on a college website to mark my parents' marital status as I calculate the tuition of my dream colleges. But here I sit on an August night, and all these things are reality. I never thought that suicide would touch my family, but here I am, a son whose dad died from suicide." Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. We appreciate that. I had the pleasure of knowing Jason Davis, and I knew this family very well, and Parker and Brooke mean a lot to me. And thank you for sharing that with us, Renee, and thank you for reading that, Commissioner Anderson. Sorry about that. Next, we're gonna have a resolution honoring the career and the service of Patrol Sergeant David Glenn Davis, and that was requested by Commissioner Val.
Yeah, it's gonna take a while right here. Resolution honoring the career and service of Patrol Sergeant David Glenn Davis. Whereas Sergeant David Glenn Davis began his service with the Anderson County Sheriff's Office on July 5th, 1989, as a corrections deputy and serving until September 22nd, 1992, and whereas he returned to the Anderson County Sheriff's Office on April 4th, 1994, serving briefly as a corrections deputy before being selected to attend the Tennessee Law Enforcement Training Academy. And whereas shortly after graduating from the academy on April 25th, 1996, Sergeant Davis transferred to the patrol division where he would faithfully serve until his retirement on August 1st, 2025. Whereas through his dedication, professionalism, and leadership, Sergeant Davis was promoted to the rank of Patrol Sergeant on May 17th, 2004, a position which he continued to serve with distinction for over 21 years until his retirement. And whereas throughout his career, Sergeant Davis received many commendations and letters of appreciation recognizing his integrity, skill, and commitment to public safety. And whereas in addition to his law enforcement service, Sergeant Davis served his country as a member of the Army National Guard, beginning in 1979, and was deployed from June 11th, 2004, until November 14th, 2005. And whereas Sergeant Davis has faithfully and honorably served the citizens of our community through his long and distinguished career in law enforcement and military service, leaving behind a legacy of honor, courage, and commitment. And now therefore be it resolved by the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session the 15th day of September, 2025, that we hereby recognize Patrol Sergeant David Glenn Davis upon his retirement for the distinguished career in law enforcement, his military service, and dedication to the safety and security of our community. Be it further resolved that we proclaim Friday, September 19th, 2025, as David Glenn Davis Day in recognition of his longtime service in our community. Duly passed, resolved, and effective this, the 15th day of December, 2025. So, just for clarification purposes, and it was a great point Sergeant Davis brought off, on the 19th, is that an extra holiday for patrol? So, guys, I have known Sergeant Davis for a super long time, back when I first got into it. Absolutely a cop's cop, and the things that he has been through, not only as a soldier, but as a deputy, it's really beyond belief. It's amazing, the things he's went through, election cycles, different sheriffs. He told me in 18, I was the last sheriff he was gonna break in. He was tired of doing that. And there's a lot of truth to that. And he is absolutely amazing. Anderson County should be incredibly proud that he chose to work for us. I know I am, that he chose to stay on board when I won in 18, and I think that we're grateful as a nation that we have men like him who are willing to step up and serve. I can't say enough good things about him. Sarge, thank you so much.
Thanks, Chair. Appreciate it.
Appreciate you, man.
His specialty is public speaking. Watch this.
Madam Vice Chair, the plaque will be on its way from the Law Director's Office momentarily.
Hang on. We're sending you home with gifts.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Mr. Davis, for serving us. We appreciate all you do and all the sacrifices you and your family have made to serve Anderson County. Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is the public hearing, and we are going to consider an amendment to the Anderson County Regional Planning Commission... Planning Region, and that is in your packet, but I am going to call on... His name just left me. Sorry. If you'll come up and maybe explain the resolution to us.
Yes, I want to give you a brief history on planning. In the past, municipalities were ahead of the counties in implementing the planning program, and the General Assembly provided legislation that would allow municipalities to do land use controls through subdivision regulations, road and utility construction, so that when they grew, they would have assurance that things would be properly installed, such as roads, lot sizes, and things like that. Since that time, many counties have implemented planning program, which Anderson County did many years ago. So Clinton is a regional planning commission currently. They have agreed to surrender their planning region, which is... It's allowed to be up to five miles. I don't think theirs is a five-mile region, but they will be surrendering their planning region to Anderson County Regional Planning Commission. So they'll have no more authority over the planning region. I'd be glad to answer any questions, if there are any.
So in your packet, there is a map that shows the region that Clinton will be surrendering to Anderson County.
And this also, Clinton voted on this to their planning board, I think.
The mayor might have attended that meeting they were at when they talked about it, but then it came back in front of the planning commission, so pretty standard. Yes.
Any questions?
Harold, thanks for the explanation of... So, the red area that's gonna be given to the county, is that my understanding?
They will be surrendering their right to review subdivision regulations, review roads or utilities in that region.
Would it also prevent them from annexing that property into city municipality?
No. They can annex by petition or referendum.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam? How many square miles are we talking about?
I don't know. It's not a lot. But I don't know what the...
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Edwards, I'm so sorry. Your name just left my brain. I'm so sorry. With that, we'll call an end to the public hearing portion. Does the count... Does anyone in the public have any comments on the resolution? If not, we will call an end to the public hearing portion, and we will stand in recess until 6:30.
Kick Phil out of your seat? You gonna come over here? There we go. Jay, go get it out of storage.
All, we will now call to order the Anderson County Board of Commissioners' September meeting. We are going to start today's meeting with a prayer by Commissioner Shane Vow, and we'll follow that with a pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Ebony Capshaw.
Heavenly Father, we come again to you tonight to thank you for all your blessings. Thank you, Lord, most of all, for salvation. And, Lord, for all the blessings of life that you give us so freely each and every day. Please forgive us of our sins. Father, we know that there are many each and every day. We ask you forgiveness of all of them. We ask that you strengthen us, Lord, give us your wisdom. Father, as we conduct a meeting tonight to discuss the business of your people, always put it in our hearts and in our minds what's best in your eyes. All this we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Ready, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, yes. But you'll still keep me. Okay. Now, we will have a time for appearance of citizens. I would, this is a time where citizens can come and address the commission with any items that are on or not on the agenda. You'll have three minutes to state your case. Also, I just want to mention that I will keep the same standards that Commissioner, that our former Commissioner kept. And, sorry, I'm just so emotional tonight. That Commissioner Mays kept. I do believe that the public does have and has the right to come and address the government, but I also believe in respect. So, we will, we will keep, keep that rule here. We will respect one another. With that, do I have anyone who would like to come forward? Commissioner Mays, if you'd like to come forward, state your, state your name and your address, please.
Well, I've got a couple addresses now. But Tyler Mays, Clinton. So, first, I just want to thank everyone who's here tonight for many, many reasons. But before I do that, I want to thank the folks in District One and Twenty-Two that elected me to serve, that trusted me, that gave me the ability to do what I love. And as I step down, I'm just really reminded of all of the good things that we've done over the last three years. Even sometimes when things get really inflamed and tough, if you really take a look back at the last three years, then we've really pushed through and done a whole lot for this county. And I will tell you this, too. All of you, all fifteen of you, have taught me something. Even when we don't agree on everything, y'all have taught me just, there's so many different angles and so many different ways to love serving the public. And I'm better for it. And, you know, when I took the job at C Task back in April, I just, I just knew that I could juggle it all, be a dad, be a coach, be a good employee, be a good commissioner. And it just didn't work out like I thought it would. And so, we opened up our house search that we've been looking for over a year, and, and we settled on a place. But I'll tell you, I can't thank you guys enough for trusting me while being on here. Getting to serve as chairman of this commission, even when it was hard. You know, it's funny, I was sitting next to my friend Nathan. We've had a lot of good, fun, spirited discussion here in this room. But you all trusted me for two years. To get to serve in that capacity means a lot to me. This is not me saying goodbye. I remain a thousand percent committed to serving Anderson County, to being a cheerleader from the sidelines for all of you, and for being there as a resource if I'm, if I'm ever needed for you guys. Because at the end of the day, we all may have sixteen different ways of getting there, but we all have the same idea and the same end goal, and that's to make an Anderson County better each and every day.
Thirty seconds.
Yeah. I told, I told Rachel, I said, I know Commissioner Foster's gonna be so thrilled to give me my deadline. So, I will end with this, from the mayor, the law director, from everybody out here, from IT to Annette, everybody. It truly has been a humbling three years. I appreciate the friendships. I value each and every one of you. And honestly, I just can't express enough how grateful I am to have served with you guys. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Tyler. I appreciate you. I've learned a lot from you, and I appreciate that. So, so, do we have anyone else who would like to address the commission? Come forward. Please just state your name and your address. And you will have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Ryan Braby from Oak Ridge, also a board member of East Tennessee Friends of Animals, a nonprofit cat rescue that serves many counties in East Tennessee. We were down at the animal shelter on September thirteenth, looking at pulling some cats for the rescue. And while the staff there is great and helpful, they did inform us that they have had a change in policy on testing for feline leukemia. Feline leukemia is a highly contagious virus that most shelters test for. The staff there told us that they were following the Young Williams model and were only going to test if a cat was symptomatic or if the adopter requested the test. The issue with that is that feline leukemia often is a slow-acting virus. While it's contagious, a cat can seem perfectly healthy and spread the virus. Often, symptoms only show up when the cat is near death. So, by not testing proactively, it risks spread of the virus in the shelter. It risks spread of virus if any of the untested cats go to PetSmart. And any adopter that doesn't know to ask for that test, it puts cats that they might have in their home at risk if they end up getting one that was untested that happens to have the virus. So, we would strongly urge that the county reconsider that and go back to having that just be a standard test for all cats that go through the shelter. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the commission? Come forward and state your name, address, and you'll have your three minutes.
Amen to respect. I'm Nathan from Oak Ridge, where my family helped win World War II. Winston Churchill said, "No compromise on the main purpose. No peace till victory. No pact with unrepentant wrong." If I were just grandstanding, I might give examples of how the moral majority is winning over Americans in the culture war, but I won't because of the real casualties on both sides. History is repeating itself with 2025 hindsight, to coin a term. Churchill was called to lead before creating a coalition of allies. He warned us of the growing threat of Hitler's socialist brown shirts prior to World War II. His assertiveness in the face of appeasement and guidance on many fronts prepared the way for Allied victory. Before retiring for Parliament, he sounded the alarm over the young Marxist Bolsheviks running amok for Lenin in Russia. He collaborated with many great leaders, guiding the greatest generation. But three days ago, we lost a MacArthur in Charlie Kirk. History repeats itself, but the cause of the trouble is the real problem, not the messenger. There will be martyrs with resilient voices on both sides, and that's a shame. Our side wants free speech and debate, but neo-socialists say that's violence that must be countered with a bullet. The Constitution guarantees privacy and protection from obscenity, but the trans Antifa Bolsheviks say parents must give up that right and cower before a small minority of activists because their rights are more important than the sanctity of your family. The Constitution was here before Marxism, and appeasing Democrats won't fix it. The tragedy here is apparent for both sides. Be careful of the revolution you ask for, you might just get it. So, Christians should continue to resist responsibly because the Bible teaches us we will lose many battles before we win the war. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins. Do we have anyone else who would like to address the commission? Please come forward and state your name and your address.
My name is Kimberly Dixon, excuse me, 121 Hubbard Circle, Clinton, Tennessee. I didn't have a chance to print out what I wanted to speak on tonight, so I'll just make it very short. We've been requesting updates since May 2nd, 2025, the animal workshop that has been put off for four months, waiting on the operational audit that has not happened. We want to update on the operational audit so we can move forward with more workshops. And if no one knows what's going on with that, or that's not gonna happen this year, can we just schedule another animal workshop and forget about the audit? Someone postponed the next workshop because of that, and I don't remember who it was. I'd have to go back and look at the tape. We don't have a problem with just going forward with trying to get more improvement, suggestions, working together to fix the problems at the current shelter. So, I'd like to have someone answer the question about the operational audit, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who would like to address the commission? With that, I will close the appearance of citizens, and we'll move on to the approval and the correction of the agenda. I can't, I can't motion. Okay. Commissioner Beauchamp.
Madam Chair, I would like to put under new business the vacancy of the District One Commission seat.
We'll add that under new business vacancy of District One Commission seat.
I'm gonna make a motion and go ahead and approve consent agenda before we get to the, that's on the agenda.
Okay, okay.
No, I can't make a motion on the board.
Okay.
I'm stuck, too. I'll settle that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. It passes. So, Commissioner Beauchamp would like to add. Do we have any, any other additions?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to ask for a discussion on State Route 116 repairs, under old business or under?
The Operations Committee.
Do you want to do it under ops, let's add it under operations, then?
Okay, that's from myself and Commissioner Vow.
Okay.
Yes.
I would like to move the Resolution 2509-1231 up in front of the Board of Commissioners Committee's report, request.
That will be the opioid resolution?
Three.
Up to 8A?
We can do that after we do Chairman Palatari, if we want to.
Okay, you want to move, you want to move it there?
I would.
After Chairman Palatari, okay. Okay, okay. We'll do it there, move it there. Do we have any other additions?
Madam Chairman, I have one additional. I'd like to add under the Law Director's Report, Item F, I guess, if I take a.
Claxton Kids Palace Discussion.
Mayor Frank?
Yes, I was sent out last week. I have to reach in the deadline of grant contract tourism enhancement grant. This has been approved by the Law Director for execution, and I was hoping to add it to the agenda.
Do we want to add it underneath the mayor's report? Okay, we'll add it underneath the mayor's report.
And then also, in the budget agenda, we have a motion for pre-trial fees. If I could either add to, put an implementation date on there, or if we need to add that to the agenda, or if it's just okay to bring that up when Robbie goes to discuss that motion, however you prefer.
So, we want to add that underneath budget reports? We want to add it to new business?
Just add, just speak to it at that.
Okay, okay. Have any other additions? Okay, I have a motion. A second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. The agenda passes. So, next, we'll move right on to the. Okay.
Motion on the agenda.
A second. Commissioner Beauchamp.
Tyler, everything's falling apart.
Yes.
We took the pass gate with you.
So.
So, this would happen.
It's his fault.
We're with you.
So, for those at home, we, we do have some iPads up here where we can request to speak and take our votes, and those are not working, so we're trying to get those up and running. Commissioner Vow, would we like to take this time to present the plaque?
If we can have about another two minutes.
Okay. So, earlier in the evening during the public hearing portion of the meeting, we had a, I'm gonna have to put my glasses on now, a resolution recognizing and honoring the service and the, and the career of Patrol Sergeant David Davis. We read the proclamation, so now we would like to present his plaque to him and take a picture, if possible, if that's okay. Y'all won't ask me to chair again, will you?
You're not signed up for that job yet?
Yeah.
If you would, just raise a hand if somebody didn't care where it's deodorant.
Looks like we might be back up. Nope, 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 okay. Yeah, we voted... Yeah, we were to the public hearing. Thank you all for being patient with us. and we have a second from Commissioner Beauchamp. We will go to the board. We don't need to, okay. We'll do a voice vote then. Again, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Okay, we are ready to move on then. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing report, which will be given by me, Vice Chairman Vandergriff. The only action item that we had during the public hearing report, or during the public hearing, was the resolution to consider an amendment to the Anderson County Regional Planning Commission Planning Region Resolution, and we had Mr. Harold Edwards come forward and explain that to us. Does any... Do I hear a motion? Okay. I have a motion, and I have a second. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
Just real quick, can I request a board vote in the next one, just to make sure it ain't working okay?
Yes.
Can? Do you want a board vote now? No, you just say passed, okay, okay. That was the only action item that we had during the public hearing, so I will close that report. Next, which is also going to be me, I believe, we... Did we move the public to 8A, or the opioid resolution to 8A?
We did it.
Okay.
Three.
Three, okay, okay.
Chair, Vice Chair, and Parliamentarian.
Okay. So we will move on to the elections, and first, we did have the resignation letter from Commissioner Mays. We don't need a vote to accept that. Okay. Uh, yes.
We do need a vote to accept the resignation letter.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
If you could fix the board where I can make that motion. Or I could do voice, whatever it is. Okay. Madam Chairman, I make a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Commissioner Mays. During the motion, I also would like to thank Commissioner Mays for his service and his leadership as chairman. Did an outstanding job. Going to miss him for sure in District One, and I think he did the best thing for himself and his family and his children, and I would never in no way criticize a man for doing that. And I appreciate you, and I wish you nothing but the best, my friend. So there's my motion to accept the letter of resignation.
And I just wanted to say thank you for your friendship. Thank you for serving as the chair and picking me as your parliamentarian, so I appreciate the last two years and appreciate you serving. So I hate that you had to leave, and I understand, but appreciate all you did.
Commissioner Palmer?
Are you going to take discussion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Tyler, for everything, being new, and he just was very patient with all my questions and inquiries, and he became a very good friend, and whoever becomes chair will have very big shoes to fill. And I think you did so much for this legislative body, for Anderson County. Thank you very much. You will be missed.
Any other discussion? With that, we will go to the board to vote.
I want to vote no.
With that, it passes. Thank you, Tyler. We love you. We'll be praying for you and your family.
You're not my commission.
I know. You got my number. With that, then, we'll move on to the election of the chairman. We'll start with that. I thought they were wanting to do chairman and then do parliamentarian, yeah. So with that, do I have... Do we have any nominations, except nominations?
I've got a question first, if you don't mind. Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah.
My question is, as we proceed into this vote for the chairman, what will be the process to elect the chairman? I'd like to know the majority number. Is it going to be eight, now that we have 15? I just want clarification on how we will vote and what the process will be.
My understanding is it would be eight, since we only have 15 now, so...
Therefore, you have 15, majority is eight.
Thank you, appreciate it.
With that, do I have any nominations for chair?
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate the next former to chairman.
Well, do I have a second? Is there a second? Okay. Do I have any other nominations?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Shane Vow.
So we have Commissioner Palmer and Commissioner Vow. Do we have any other nominations? Do I have a motion to close nominations? With that, second, second. So I have a motion and a second to close nominations. With that, do we want to do a voice vote, or...
I think in that...
Annette, do you have?
Closing nominations first.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor of closing nominations say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. With that, Annette, do you have any?
We did it anyway. We do the...
Let's practice the wrong call. We wanted the wrong call.
We just did. Yeah.
I said, we always do paper.
Do you want to do paper?
Paper.
Okay. I think it's the pleasure of the commission to do paper. Paper.
Yeah, we like paper.
We want paper, please.
I was messing up, bro. I was messing up, I just had to walk in.
Yeah, it's not working. It's working. My name goes first?
Okay, all right, thank you. My name first.
Don't write your name, write your name.
Do I get to add your vote?
You got more, more coming. Commissioner Allen Palmer. Commissioner Wyatt Palmer. Commissioner McCamey Vow. Commissioner Palmer Palmer. Commissioner Anderson Palmer. Commissioner Smile Ridge Palmer. Commissioner Varren Palmer. Commissioner Capshaw Palmer. Commissioner Vow Vow. Commissioner Isabel Vow. Commissioner Waddell Vow. Commissioner Foster Palmer. Commissioner Vandergriff Palmer. Commissioner Jaeger Palmer. Commissioner Beauchamp's Palmer.
Congratulations, Commissioner Palmer. Chairman Palmer.
All I can say is, wow, I'm very humbled by this, and I know Chairman Vow as chairman of budget, and he is a fantastic chair, and we would have been in good hands had the vote gone the other way. Thank you for your leadership and for being willing to step up in leadership as well. I will promise to be as fair. I will be fair, I'll be honest, I will work with each one of you all, and I thank you for this opportunity. And with that, I guess we'll choose a vice chair. Are we ready for that? Okay. Thank you guys so much. Let me get set up here, and you'll have to help me with that. And I do mean it. I have big shoes to fill. I will be calling you. All right.
She'll tell me.
All right. All right. I'm sorry. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to nominate Vice Chair Vandergriff for another term.
All right, thank you. Any other nominations? Do I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
The nominations, and Mr. McCamey, Commissioner McCamey.
I want the motion that nomination cease and shall be elected.
Right. All those in favor for closing the nominations say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All those in favor for Vice Chair Vandergriff? We don't need to do that. Thank you very much. All right, congratulations. All right. I'll get in the swing here in a minute. I need to name a parliamentarian. I would like to ask if Commissioner Beauchamp would be willing to serve as parliamentarian?
I would.
All right, I would like to appoint her as the parliamentarian. So that's...
I don't know, I'm going to sit my field out.
You do, you do. Thank you, Michael. You've done a great job. I'm sure we'll be yelling at you.
You can come first.
All right. We are going to...
We have someone wanting to speak.
We have someone wanting to speak. Who?
Jaeger. He's on the board.
Oh, I'm sorry. Look, I've never seen this computer before, so give me a minute. Okay. Commissioner Jaeger.
Thank you. I just want to say I'm proud to be serving with the very first triumvirate female leadership that this county's ever had, and I congratulate all three of you.
All right, guys. I know, your emotions rubbing off on me. Thank you so much. What pressure that has placed on us. Thank you. All right, with this, we need to approve the opioid resolution. That was emailed, or did everyone got a copy of it?
Yes, I did give everyone a copy of that.
All right. No, you go right ahead and explain what we're doing.
I do want to apologize for the lateness of the resolution. Last Tuesday, we did have an opioid committee meeting, and we decided at that we wanted to propose a change in the makeup of the committee. So previously, we had... We previously had three commissioners off of the Budget Committee and three commissioners off of Operations. After last year, we just decided that we felt like we wanted to expand that a little bit, because it is such a large amount of money, and we distributed that throughout the county. So we made the motion to change the resolution and add four members. So we made the motion to change the resolution and add four members from the Budget Committee and four members from Operations Committee. So for a total of eight. So again, I apologize for the lateness of the resolution. I would really want to thank Morgan and also the Law Director for preparing this in such short order and giving it to us. Again, Section Two is the change where we changed the composition of the voting members and then also we added in the expacto non-voting members on that. We also made a small change in Section Five where we put in clarification on when the committee will be disbanded. So just upon conclusion of the opioid abatement funding, then the opioid settlement committee would automatically dissolve. And with that.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Beauchamp, I can't, she's first, okay? Okay, we're going to do that after this. We just need to approve this motion and then we'll take a break, okay? So who made the motion first was Foster? And second was by Commissioner? Capshaw, okay. Any discussion on that motion, any discussion on the resolution? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion passes. All right, we're going to take about, what do we need, ten-minute break? Okay, and we'll take a ten-minute break so they can change all of the computers, maybe give me a quick tutorial here. And we'll be back in ten minutes. Thank you. Seven twenty-two. Thank you all for putting up with me tonight, I appreciate it. So right here is where the motions will be. What? That's the committees, yes. Huh? What's not on here? I know because we're having an election for three committees and it did not keep them on. All right, I'll call this meeting back to order, please. All right, the first thing that we need to do is vote on these committees. As you know, the nomination committee was moved to full commission. So we had Commissioners contact Annette and let her know what committees they wanted to be on. And so I just passed out a list of committees, okay? So these, on this piece of paper, are the committees that we did not have any, we had, we had the number of Commissioners that we needed apply for the committee, all right? There were three committees that we had more Commissioners apply than were positions available on the committee, all right? So that was nonprofit, legal services, and finance. So we're going to do an election for those three, but these on this piece of paper that I handed out, these are the, should be the committees. We need to vote on this to approve these. But these are the Commissioners that signed up for these committees and that's the number of Commissioners that we need for each committee. We passed the opioid resolution, so the opioid committee at the bottom of the page, there are four operations and four budget. It just happened that we had four from each committee sign up for the opioid committee. So that's been taken care of. Those are the four that, or the eight that signed up. Does that make sense? If you notice on this also, we have a couple of open positions. We will have an opening on budget for the District One Commissioner, the vacancy there. So that will be filled by whoever is, whoever we put into that position, all right? Then also, if you look on the back page, on the Audit Committee, we only had one Commissioner say that they would like to be on there. And that is a committee of seven. So if someone's interested on, you know, being on audit, they must be on the Budget Committee, that's what just, we just passed that. So you may need to help us with that, Director, Law Director Brooks. Also, there's an opening on fixed assets, but otherwise, those are the Commissioners that signed up for those committees. Does that make sense? All right, so what we're going to do now is we're going to have an election for the three that we had more Commissioners apply for than we had openings. So which one's the first one? Okay, sure.
I was going to make a motion to approve these.
Okay.
Commissioner is actually was on the list to speak first.
Okay.
Madam Chair. Actually, with Commissioner Foster not putting back in for Beer Board, we've got an opening there and we really need another volunteer because sometimes we have a.
I'm not a Commissioner representative, I'm just on the board.
Correct, that's what you told me, that I'm still, my term's not up on Beer Board.
Okay, so we're just voting on two, so.
That's what I was understanding, that my term is still not.
But we can still, we're still a person short. We only have nine and there's room for ten. I said we only have nine and there's room for ten, is that correct? Yeah, so there's still an opening.
Okay, we can just place open, an open spot there, and if we have someone that wants to.
If not, we can advertise it publicly again.
Okay, it could be a citizen or a Commissioner, all right. Does anyone, before we vote on this, does anyone want to fill any of these open positions? Fixed assets, audit? Does anyone want to be considered for that? Or Beer Board? Yes. Okay. You are on budget, correct? Okay. Who else?
I'd like to serve on audit.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else over here?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman. Do you have a second to this motion yet?
We've not had a motion yet.
I've made, I put on the board to approve the ones that are set, okay.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I respectfully request to fill the open District One Budget position, being that there's only one Commissioner remaining. I understand that perhaps there's many around this table that would like to wait until we nominate somebody. But my district will be without any representation on the Budget Committee, so I respectfully request to be placed on the Budget Committee until a replacement has been chosen.
All right, so coming off of operations and going on to budget.
No, no, it doesn't make any sense either. If I come off operation, there's nobody on operation. I understand the rules internally here, it's not a state rule. This rule can be overridden by this body sitting around this table. It's just a matter of the fellow Commissioners allowing me to serve on Budget and Operations and there's no conflict.
All right, so I will need a motion to suspend the rules to allow this. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all right. All of those in favor of suspending the rule, or any discussion, any discussion on this?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. It's my understanding, I may be completely wrong, that it says that on Budget and Operations, only one from each. But seeing as how we don't have but one, I don't see an issue with that, you know, Commissioner Waddell can serve on both until someone fills that other spot, then he would go back to Operations.
All right.
Solely.
All right, so the plans would be to act, since we've accepted the resignation, we will get the notice out for this vacancy. We will accept applications. We have to do that, I think, for ten days, Annette, is that correct? We'll take those and we will take this up in October. So the Budget Meeting will be before the next Commission Meeting, but it won't be for only one meeting because we will fill that position in October. Correct?
At full commission.
At full commission.
So, it'd be for one meeting.
So, the October budget committee, okay, so the motion... Okay. Um, the, uh, motion on the floor is to suspend the rules so that we can, um, get another motion to fill that vacancy. So, the motion is to suspend the rules. Any other discussion? Okay.
I do.
Okay.
Mr. Brooks, what is your opinion on this?
The internal rules speak against the same commissioner being on both committees. However, since you do not have two commissioners from that district, under the circumstances, as I understand them, that this will be just a placeholder so that the first district has representation on both. Until a new commissioner is sworn in, I would approve it.
All right, so it is per, it's in order to suspend the rules?
Yeah, I think you have to suspend the rules.
All right. Any other discussion? The motion is to suspend the rules.
It, it, I mean, in the rule 13 of the, of Operations Budget, it talks that we can't suspend the rule, um, of that for a majority of voting, allow simultaneous service on one of the two, of the two commissioners. So, it, our rules allow for us to suspend the rules of our internal rules.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all of those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now, we need a motion to allow Commissioner Wondell to fill both budget and operations. So, I think that is Bochamp first, motion, and second by Capshaw, correct?
I'm going to make the motion that Mr. Wondell will serve for, um, budget and operations for October, and then he'll be back on operations, if that's where he wants to go, right, Mr. Wondell? You want to go, you want to stay on operations?
Yeah, I don't think the motion should be, um, reflective of where I go to which committee. I think me and the commissioner, whoever it may be, gets selected. We can discuss that like all other commissioners have done in the past.
Well, I mean, you've signed up for operations.
Yeah.
So, that's why my motion's...
Yes. Okay, go ahead and finish, I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead, finish, and let me know when you're done, and I'll give you my answer.
Go right ahead.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Madam Chairman, when I signed up, I was not under the impression that we're losing a commissioner in District One. I had no knowledge that the budget committee position would be open.
I understand, I understand.
So, it would be hard for me to put my name in for the budget when I didn't know we was going to lose a commissioner.
All right, so the motion on the floor...
So, I, I just would ask, if a commissioner doesn't feel comfortable with it, don't vote for it.
All right.
I would respectfully request that District One be represented on both committees. Me and the new commissioner, whoever it may be, will work out who serves where.
Understood.
Thank you.
So, the motion on the floor is that Commissioner Wondell will serve on budget and operations for the October budget and operations meeting, correct? All right. Any further discussion? All of those in favor? I'm sorry?
It won't let me amend the motion.
Okay.
I think we ought to drop the October thing, and that he be allowed to serve until, like, it's elected. I mean, we're saying October, though. If we don't get somebody elected in October, it may be November.
Okay.
So, I would, I would like to amend the motion, drop the date for the, the month, and just say that he serve until his replacement for...
All right. So, um, you make that as a motion? An amendment? Okay. Do we, we need a second on the amendment? Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? To drop October and make it till we replace the District One Commissioner? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. All right, so now, we're back to the, um, the motion, which is to allow Commissioner Wondell to serve on the operations and budgets until the District One co-commissioner is, uh, is selected by this, this body, the legislative body. All right, we have a motion on that, that is this here, Bochamp, and, uh, second by Commissioner Capshaw. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Anything else on this committee list?
So, we, we've not voted on this committee list yet.
No, not on this committee list. We're going to put, uh, this open spot on budget will be Commissioner Wondell until a District One Commissioner is selected by this legislative body.
Can I have the original motion on this motion? Uh, we're going back to that one.
For this, for this set?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I will go, if no one else wants to go and pick assets, I can go on in.
Okay. The open spot?
Is the open spot for the school finance director?
Yeah, I saw, say, yeah.
We don't need a spot.
That is my understanding. Correct, Annette?
But, I mean, is that person supposed to be on the committee by statute? And then we don't have a spot open? Not a commissioner's draw.
Not a commissioner's spots, thank you, sorry about that. Any other commissioner want to serve on any of these open spots? We have a motion to accept this, um, committee sheet. Do I have a second? Commissioner Allen's with the second. Any discussion on this committee list? Yes, ma'am?
I was, I just had a question about...
Okay.
Okay, the audit, I, when we voted on the audit, I was under the impression, just me, um, that we would say, uh, everyone that was on the budget committee would automatically be audit, so y'all could vote it during, vote on it during your meeting, um, to, to reduce, because usually it's... I mean, I was on the audit committee this time, and it was like, I think, five minutes that we voted on, accepted for the budget. And so, I thought when we were discussing that, it was so that you all could have it as part of your, uh, budget committee meeting vote, and then move forward, since everyone would all be present.
So, the reason why this is here, and I don't understand, this is, was before us, but there's seven members on the audit committee instead of the eight. And, um, so that did not change, correct?
And I, I, well, it happened in roles, and then it passed full commission, I don't care to speak on that, if...
Sure.
The, I mean, there's statutory reasons that the, it is laid out how that committee's set up. So, we can't roll it into budget committee, so when we approved it, it was members of the budget committee, because they can meet five minutes before, like we've done in the past. It's usually a five-minute meeting to go over, sometimes a little longer. But it needs, we decided to be budget committee members so they can have a meeting and not have to bring in Commissioner Capshaw, who's on operations, and has to come for a five-minute meeting for something that's usually just a procedural kind of thing. So, um, for the budget committee members that are not volunteering, it's not going to take any extra time. It's going to take you five, 10 minutes of showing up early for that, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
We really need some volunteers for that. Well, we should just nominate some people.
We have three, we need four more from the budget committee. Any one want to?
I'm going to start throwing out some names.
Go ahead.
Okay.
You're already going to be there.
Any other? I've got Shelley, uh-huh.
How about the chairman?
I, I can do that, yes. I'm just trying to be silenced by the gavel. One more, from budget. Can't even remember who's on budget. We lost, um, Mays.
Jerry White.
Jerry, Jerry White.
Well, I'd be happy to join.
Do you want to?
Sure. I don't think the motion says that.
As long as you're on budget?
As long as...
You can be on audit, okay?
We can reappoint if he decides to go to...
Right.
Operations.
All right.
And I will go, I think we are one short on resell land, all right?
Yes.
I will go on that one, but finish that out.
All right. Any others? Any other discussion on this committee list? Everyone's good. All right, we have the motion, um, by Commissioner Wondell to accept this...
Changes, yes.
Changes, with the changes. And Commissioner Allen is, has the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now, we need to take care of these three committees. We're going to do this quickly. We have ballots, and, uh, County Court Clerk Cole is going to pass them out to us. Finance, it would be great, whichever one you want to start with. Yes.
So, on the ballots, is it going to list, and we're going to rank them?
Yes. So, he's passing them out. You have to choose, choose four from the list of five. And this is for Finance Committee. Choose four commissioners from this list of five. Thank you. Yes.
I have a question.
Okay, yes.
Commissioner Wondell has requested to be first, so...
Okay, let's see. I'm sorry, Commissioner Wondell, I thought that was a motion.
That's okay, thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, I guess my question is, the Finance Committee had two openings. Myself, I, I've reapplied, as you mentioned earlier, to be on Finance. But yet, my name's on here to be either voted in or voted out. I don't know why my name would be on there to be voted in or voted out when there was only two openings. And, um, why, why, why is that, that way? I mean, Mr. Chair, uh...
There was a change...
Ms. Brooks, I think I would like some guidance from a legal standpoint before we take any action on changing the members of this committee tonight. I, I, I'm having some trouble with, um, why standing members who signed up for the committee would then be placed on a ballot to be voted off? I just, I don't understand.
I'd like to call a point of order, please.
What's the point of order? I'm asking the question of the law director.
Please address the chair.
Oh, I apologize. Go ahead, Madam Chair.
I understand your question, Commissioner Wondell. If you would like to address that, Commissioner Brooks, that'd be great. Commissioner Brooks, I'm sorry, Law Director Brooks.
You sure you want an answer without me looking at it first?
All right, so, um, how about if we let Commissioner Jaeger, since he made the motion to dissolve, or, yes, dissolve the nominating committee and put it into, um, the full commission? Leave it to full commission? Yes, please.
These are one-year terms? Yes. It says so on, on the, um, website, it says so on the committees. So, all, all positions are open on every committee, every year, if they're one-year terms.
Okay, that's your answer, then. It's because all committees are subject to reappointment every year. And that's, that's been a recent rule change, as I understand it.
So, we have, um, a committee of commissioners, a Finance Committee. There are four commissioners that go on that Finance Committee. We have had five commissioners apply for those four spots. Therefore, we're having an election to choose four. So, the top four vote-getters will be on the Finance Committee. Any questions?
Yeah, so if there's ties, it's going to be the, they'll re-vote on those?
Yes.
Or, okay.
All right.
And will the lowest voter be removed if there's a tie?
Yes. Commissioner Wondell? Oh, Isabel.
And back to the question that I had, uh, during the break, is we have two commissioners from the same district?
Yes.
Is that allowable on the Finance Committee?
During the break, I asked the law director and also the finance director, and it's my understanding that it is not a problem. There is nothing that states that we cannot have two commissioners from the same district on the Finance Committee.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. All right. You've got them all, do you want to? Okay.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
I guess I was confused, and I apologize. When I received an email asking me to fill out the form to which committees I wanted to remain on, and when I filled out the form to the committees I wanted to remain on, I had no idea that the committee I signed up and being asked to join, or wanted to remain on, was going to be taking up an action, take it, to potentially vote me off. So, I just want to make that point of clarification, and...
Thank you. I'm sorry that it is a little confusing. We just changed this, as you know, as a commission. We just changed this process, and so this is the first time we are doing this, this way. So, there's going to be some hiccups, and we'll get through them. Do you have all of those ballots, Jeff? Okay. All right. As Annette is adding those up, could we please pass out the next ballot for? Legal Services. We had, that is, a committee needs three commissioners. We have four that has applied for that committee. So, we will choose three of the four on this ballot. And as like before, the top three will serve on the committee. Okay, I won't hold it next time. Sorry. Commissioner Wondell, are you wishing to speak?
Yes, when I push the button, it turns yellow, and I think that's what I'm asking for. And I apologize if I'm interrupting the process, I don't mean to.
You are not, I'm recognizing you. I just looked and saw, I didn't know if we were having a glitch or what.
I apologize, I didn't know if I was doing something incorrectly, I didn't know.
No, I will let you know when you do something incorrect.
I'm sure you will. Miss, Madam Chairman, um, again, another committee that, um, I filled out to be on. And, and the difference here, Madam Chairman, is it's a statutory committee by a private act. So, a group of people can't sit around a table and change it just so willy-nilly. So, I, I would suggest that this vote be, um, put off indefinitely until we have our Legal Services Advisory Committee meeting, which, by the way, hasn't been held since May 5th of 2025. The last one before that was February 14th of 2025. And our chairman has yet to call a meeting, which I've asked for two different times since May.
All right, Commissioner Wondell, so this is something...
You can cut me off if you'd like, and I'll listen, go ahead.
This is what we do every September. We choose commissioners to go on to these committees. In the past, whoever has been on the committee and did not want to come off was not allowed or made to come off. That kept other commissioners from serving in that capacity. That was changed a couple of months ago, and we all voted on that. So, we are now proceeding with the new rules and the new method. And this is what, what we're doing, we all chose to do this, we all voted on this. So, we had four applicants... So we had four applicants for those three positions. The only fair thing is, is to vote and let this body choose who the three commissioners they want to serve on legal services. It's not statutory. Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation and I disagree, the, the committee is a private act.
It is a private act, but it does not.
And the rules have not been changed in the private act to allow this action.
But the private act does not say that three commissioners stay on it for eternity. Other commissioners have a right to serve on that committee. Is there any other discussion? Okay, did you, do you have the tally for, and this is for finance? Yes, the top four vote-getters, yes. All right, thank you. Do you have the finance or the legal services tallied? Okay, let's pass out, let's do the nonprofit. This is a committee that had eight, I'm sorry. Eight, had eight commissioners on it. This body chose to, to shrink that committee to five. We now have eight commissioners that have applied for these five positions.
You've got seven because I don't want.
You don't want. Okay, we have seven. Thank you, Commissioner White. So don't vote for Commissioner White. Choose five. Choose five.
Five?
Yes. When you collect these, Jeff, I think we'll go ahead and let the mayor give her report and then we'll report the results. Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Wondell, Palmer, and Bo Champ. Jeff, do you think you could tally that last committee and let her take the minutes so we can continue on? Yes. No, because the resolution passed, so we have, it was already for budget for operation. Thank you guys for your help. Jeff, can you handle tallying that? Thank you guys, you make a great team. All right, we're going to move on to the presentation of reports and after, first will be the county mayor, Terry Frank, and after that, Jeff, we'll have the reading of that election result, okay? Good? Yes? Okay. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, congratulations on your elections.
I thank you.
The first item I have, well, I guess she'll need to add one contract.
Yes.
So the action, I have two action items. The first is a request for county commission endorsement of a grant application from the state of Tennessee for $20,000 for Tennessee's America 250. The grant project will involve a media project through tourism and archives department that preserves and shares the county's unique role in American history. As part of the effort of tourism, we'll be dedicating a webpage to 250 events in our county. We've kind of highlighted some examples such as Norris Dam, the city of Norris, David Hall Cabin, Coal Creek War of 1890s, Oak Ridge Secret City, Clinton 12. Those are some of the ones that we are putting in the grant application.
All right, so we have a motion for Commissioner Bo Champ, a second by Commissioner Allen to approve this grant request. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, do we need to make this a board vote? No? For the money? All right. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, just some of the other items I put on there, status update, so the Anderson County 250th, I'm putting the other planning committee to support the initiatives and the primary objectives of this committee would just be to encourage just different individuals, organizations, schools, and businesses, and churches to create and host events that educate and inspire about historical events in the spirit of America's 250. And then also we have a nice graphic for Anderson County that will come on the website and if anybody has any ideas for other things they would like to do with that, maybe if you would like to help serve on that.
Mayor, I'm going to text it, they can't hear you on TV, so might try a different mic, I don't know if that. I just got a text about it.
Okay.
I don't know.
We're having all kinds of gremlins tonight.
Yes. Technical.
Tech gremlins.
Yeah.
Is that better? The third item, I put the shelter statistics in there, as you recall, last month, there was an error, so we have corrected ones from last month's bulletin.
Okay.
The fourth is great news, we were selected as a recipient of the grant award for signage, fencing, wayfinding, and entrance landscaping for Lost Bottom Park. A big thank you to Stephanie Wells for offering help on this application and to Lowe's Design for the assistance. The project will receive $49,000 from the state of Tennessee. And of course, thank you to Chairman Hayes, Conservation Board, and County Commission Budget Committee for the support, as well as Lieutenant Governor Reagan McNally and Representative Scarborough, they also wrote letters of support.
They still can't hear you, so I'm sorry. Maybe it's all, I don't know.
Just the, the last two items were great news, we had an award for the NRDA for Lost Bottom Park. This particular grant project, we will receive, and I'm going to do this because maybe it's something sound. We are going to receive $327,450 for that particular grant. We also have a lot of community help from Pellicippi Blueways, as well as Melton Hill Lake Users Association. And of course, our elected officials, Congressman Fleishman, Lieutenant Governor McNally, and Representative Scarborough. And then last, Anderson County Archives was selected for an award for an Archives Development Program Grant in the amount of $4,200 for the purchase of roller shelving for the archives. So some good news there. And then another action item would be the contract for the Tourism Enhancement Grant for Lost Bottom Park for the wayfinding signage and landscaping and, and fencing. And I am requesting a motion to approve, and that was approved by the law director for execution.
All right. Commissioner Wondell requested to speak before this motion, so I'm going to give him the floor.
How much time do I have?
Three minutes.
Thank you, start the clock. I'd like to ask some questions. I received this, the mayor is correct, the law director did approve this to form and form only, and it says in the cover lever, however, if you like additional guidance and advice regarding specific provisions of the contract, please feel free to call me. All, all contracts and grants are that way. This grant is between the state of Tennessee Department of Tourism Development and Anderson County Government. Under section A2 of the grant, it says, from the grant, for the purpose of this grant, definition shall be as follows set forth in the grant. It's to be used for historic village, means settlement, or collections of buildings that are preserved to represent a specific period in history. Grant categories include improvement to public, public tourism infrastructure grant, upgrade public tourism infrastructure, or construction of new tourism attraction project. This grant is for roughly $79,000. Mayor just mentioned another grant for $367,000. I just asked myself, when I drove to the facility this weekend on Sunday at 1:00, what in the world do we need $500,000 of money for a gravel road? And I understand there's some great presentations that many of you probably have seen that I have not, and I represent that district. I found one whiskey bottle in the one trash can that was there from the weekend, nobody uses the park, one car pulled in while I was there, it was a truck, I don't know what they did, but they sat there for quite a while. But I, I guess I just get confused how we can put a lot of time, money, and energy into a park that's not even used, maybe if I had to guess, 10 to 20 people a month. This is kind of confusing to me. So I'll just make those comments, I won't go any deeper, I'll vote against it, very disappointed that our tourism would support this. I'm very disappointed that our state representative and anybody else has supported this, when our community down here needs money for these old historic buildings and us developing a pull-off area just seems questionable to me at best. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, if I may respond?
Yes, ma'am.
I will definitely check and make sure that they have not made an error on their historic village language, but this is a tourism enhancement grant. In fact, the grant application has measurable deliverables where we will actually provide data to the state of Tennessee. Stephanie pulled as part of the grant application, I don't think she's here tonight. She pulled as part of the grant application, we have the ability with Placer AI to actually give you an exact count of how many people go to that park, she submitted those numbers. And then we'll submit more when we have a new kayak launch, when we have a new ADA accessible pier, when we have a better boat launch, it's insufficient launch. So this particular project came about and it has commission support, Conservation Board support back in the day. It came about because of input from people in the community who asked for improvements. They said the boat ramp was insufficient, that your wheels spin, you cannot pull the boat out, you cannot get into the water, so all of the amenities are for our citizens. And I referenced the Pellicippi Blueways as an example. That Blue Way is being developed around Oak Ridge, the Clinch, with different spots along the river from Gibbs Ferry Park to this particular park, to Aspire Park, a lot of takeouts for the people in our community. So it's a great project and I'm very excited that we're able to get two grants where we have help from the state of Tennessee to develop these amenities for our people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other?
I would say the microphone is working.
Oh, good.
Yay. All right, so we need a motion, what, the grant that you're wanting us to make a motion on, which one is that?
The, the Tourism Enhancement Grant Contract is being approved by the law director.
Okay. So the motion was made by Commissioner Allen, second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any discussion on this? All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mayor. Next will be Director of Finance Robbie Holbrook.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, yes, sir.
I think Commissioner Isabel, did you want the Highway 116 letter on my report or? Was that somewhere else?
Well, we voted to put it under.
Operation, okay, okay. I've written it down and I'll just get to it.
All right, Robbie, we're going to have to pause for just a moment. So we've had a tie on this nonprofit, you've got. So what we need to do is vote between the, the two that tied, okay? Okay, so you will be voting between Commissioner Varan and Commissioner Wondell.
Madam Chairman, we can skip that, I'll be happy to yield Commissioner Varan the spot. Thank you, Commissioner Varan, for stepping up, you'll do a great job, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wondell. All right. Thank you. Can you tell us who they are?
Commissioner Bo Champ, Commissioner Vandergriff, Commissioner Vow, and Commissioner Jaeger and Commissioner Varan.
Thank you very much, hope you heard that.
We did. Jeff was a little soft-spoken on that one.
That's unusual for him. Say those again, Jeff. We know Commissioner Varan. Commissioner Jaeger. Commissioner Vow. Commissioner Vandergriff. Commissioner Bo Champ. And that is for nonprofit, the five for nonprofit. Thank you. All right, Director Holbrook, you're up.
Thank you, Chairman Palmer. First up, the cash and fund balance report ending August 31st, 2025, unaudited still. For the general fund, restricted funds, $1,487,573. Committed funds, $357,761. Assigned funds, $2,237,153. Unassigned fund balance, $13,742,638. Total fund balance of $17,825,125. Cash, $16,296,289, which is down $632,921 from last year at this time. The general purpose school, $141,000 fund, $13.1 million of total fund balance, cash, $20,528,636. Any questions on the cash and fund balance?
Question? Continue on. Oh, I'm sorry.
When do you hope to have the audit?
They're finally in our county, last week, one day, today, and they'll be here a couple more days this week. It will probably be November, to be honest, though, before we're done with audit, before they have their final reports, so. Okay, sales tax, the county as a whole up for, up 8% from last July, and the Anderson County portion a 3% increase from July of last year. I'm just going to run through these real quick and if you all have any questions, just stop me. ARP, ARPA projects, we still have eight unfinished projects, although we did finish one, completed one this week with the IT infrastructure needs. And also, we reported EMS received one of their ambulances, or rescheduled for three more by the end of September with a December 26 deadline, so we're starting to complete some of the projects and see some delivery on some of those vehicles. Interest is $430,747.
Commissioner Isabel, you have a question?
I do, on the ARPA funds. When it comes to the ARPA funds, what we allocated to Anderson County Water Authority, if any of those projects don't go through, what happens to that money?
That was a different allocation for us, through TDEC. And to be honest with you, I'm not 100% sure. We gave the cities, all five cities, 200.
257.
Yes, and then the ACWA received the rest of it. But I think they had several uses of that fund and I know we've already spent a lot of that, I'll get you a report for next month.
Well, I guess what my question is, is when we did that, we had specific projects that we're going to aim it to, and I think even in the minutes from ACWA, the mayor asked the board to, you know, try to stay as close to the projects as.
I guess the costs were too high to do one particular portion, and I think they did some replacement lines, maybe in Bryceville or something, they plugged that in there, but we can get that information from them.
That's one of my... myself, I just want to make sure that we're not in conflict or something, or not doing something we're not supposed to do.
Commissioner Wondell?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Robbie, I think I'm getting... Yes, TDEC also provided funds, right? Like you said?
Yes.
But we took funds out of our ARPA money, and it was item number twenty-seven on the list, if I'm not mistaken. So three-hundred-seventy-nine-thousand, five-hundred-and-fourteen dollars, ninety-two cents. So that was in addition to the TDEC money. Wouldn't that be correct?
Is that a matching portion, if I'm thinking correctly, Mayor, on that three-hundred?
I would have to go back and check.
I will too. Commissioner Wondell, I apologize. I haven't had as much to do with the TDEC, the water, as John and Randy did. So, and we don't report out on that really. And the reason that ACWA got received the majority of the funds, we don't have any utility or, you know, in the county, so that's basically our...
Madam Chairman, if I could continue, thank you. Robbie, I don't blame you or the mayor, but, you know, I'm seeing a pattern with funds going to Anderson County Water Authority, grants being issued, and then the work not being completed. And it's bothersome to me that we can take the money and give it to them, and then the projects aren't finished. I question that. So from your standpoint, as a finance director, I know you don't have any authority, but if you could do some checking to understand how that affects us and what options we may have from a county standpoint on the Finance Department, I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
No problem.
All right. Grant reports, next.
Yes. Grant reports for twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. As we offer each month, a list of grants that we have for this current fiscal year. And I don't really have any new ones to add, that we added since last month, but we will have a couple of new ones, obviously, that we approved this month for, that we earlier tonight. So we'll change next month, but if you have any questions or comments on the four reports.
All right, let's move on to purchasing contracts.
Purchasing contracts, there are four of those that have all been approved by legal.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Beauchamp, second by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion on the contracts? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Also requesting to surplus two vehicles, one from Juvenile and one from Fleet Services.
We have a motion by Commissioner Foster, second by Commissioners Smallridge. Any discussion on this surplus vehicles? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Under Group Four appropriations for the School Department, there are five of those, seeking approval as a group.
All right. Commissioner Allen made the motion to approve as a group, correct? Yes. Second by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Under Group Four appropriations for the School Department, there are five of those, seeking approval as a group.
All right. Commissioner Allen made the motion to approve as a group, correct? Yes. Second by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, moving down to Group Six appropriations, non-school, there are sixteen of those. Nine through nineteen, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Allen to approve as a group, second by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion on these sixteen? We'll need to go to the board to vote on this. We up? Back in business. Motion carries. All right.
Chairman Palmer, I don't believe we did a board vote on Group Four appropriations for the School Department.
Okay.
So we need to make sure we do that.
Okay. Jaeger and Foster, okay. Can you put that up? Josh, we need to do a board vote on Group Four. Commissioner Vow and Isabelle.
Jim's taking...
Thank you, guys. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Group Seven appropriations that affect the general fund and assigned fund balance, there are three of those, seeking approval as a group.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Allen to approve as a group. Commissioner Allen, as a group? Yes, all right. Second by Commissioner Varan. Any discussion? Go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
Thank you. And Group Eight, two transfers from the general fund for thirty thousand and seventy-five-thousand dollars payroll, that affect payroll.
Motion by Commissioner Isabelle to approve as a group.
Yes.
Second by Commissioner Capshaw. Any discussion? All those in favor, or go to the board and vote. This needs to be a board vote as well. Commissioner Wondell? Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Under Group Nine miscellaneous, section A, the EMS striker equipment was approved under Group Six. I do have one comment. The minutes were incorrect. On page sixteen, they said two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, and that's two-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand, and I will get those corrected. I just wanted to make that, to let you all know that. And section B, the Health Department renovations, that was also approved in Group Six.
Robbie, do you want to vote on these individually?
We've already voted on the amendments.
Okay, so you...
Yes, now I do have a vote on this Health Department renovation. We did approve two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the assigned funds for capital projects, but the other two-hundred-and-fifty was voted on by the Budget Committee to come from ARP interest as the last dollar end. So I didn't do a budget amendment for that, but I do want this committee to be aware and to also vote on that.
Okay. So this is to take part of the money out of...
Currently, we don't... Yeah, our ARP interest is sitting around around two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, but we're earning it seven thousand or so a month, which will start to decrease a little bit.
All right. I need a motion to approve this appropriation. We have a motion by Commissioner Beauchamp, second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any discussion? Commissioner Isabelle?
I've got a question on seventeen A.
Okay.
Yeah, when we get there.
Okay, all right. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Under section C, the pre-trial release fees, I'd like to read the motion, and the mayor's also added discussion for it. Implementation date, motion by Commissioner Beauchamp and second by Commissioner Allen to raise the fee to a hundred dollars to be paid within a six-month period. Every six months, they are on, we have probation, we're going to add, change that to pre-trial release. Additionally, the individual would pay their own drug testing, including lab charges. If drug test is contested and comes back clean, the county will pay the lab charges. The motion was amended by Commissioner Vandergriff and second by Commissioner Allen to include possible community service of twenty hours for every six months in lieu of payment decided by judge, by the judge.
Mayor, did you have something you wanted to add on the pre-trial?
Well, we didn't put an implementation date on there, and I just thought maybe we need to push that maybe to December one or January one, just to get everything plugged in and also make sure there's no issues with anyone, if that was acceptable to the body.
So push the vote and everything till then?
No, no, no. Go ahead and put it in place, but just like for when we start collecting it.
Okay.
So...
All right.
Yeah.
So let's see. We need to, we have a motion by Commissioner Beauchamp, second by Commissioner Allen, that is to approve this with the implementation date.
January first.
January first.
Good, thank you.
So good with you, Commissioner Allen? And you? Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Section D, the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget, the state requires us to present the committee with a letter from the state for the approval of the budget and for timely adoption, so this doesn't need a board vote, just...
Okay.
Noticing that you all have seen the letter was in the minutes.
You want us to vote to accept this?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Vow, second by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And under new business, the Claxton Bond was the first item we took up under new business, and it was approved in section six A. I would also like a motion under, school cannot, the Board of Education cannot, let me read, not approve debt, so it has to come into a general fund, fund, so we brought it in one-seventy-one, which is the capital of projects for the general fund, and now I need to move the money from one-seventy-one to one-forty-one. So the budget amendment in budget was in, to approve the bond in one-seventy-one and as a contribution to the one-forty-one fund, so that's what I'm asking, the motion now for, to move the money to the one-forty-one fund.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner McCamey, second by Commissioner Wondell. Any discussion? Board to vote on this, or Robbie?
Yes, please.
Josh, a board vote? Yeah. Motion passes.
Okay, under new business, item two, with the flat grant, that was approved as item number twenty-eight and twenty-nine in section six. And new business, item number three, the Oak Ridge General Sessions Court, there was also a motion to approve, and I will read the motion, Commissioners Beauchamp, second by Commissioner Anthony Allen, for one-time payment of fifty thousand dollars for roof repairs and a contract with the City of Oak Ridge for fifty thousand a year until 2030. This will be reviewed by the Law Director and purchasing agent every five years. Commissioner Vow voted no.
Okay.
And Commissioner Smallridge. Excuse me, sorry.
So we need a motion to approve this?
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Beauchamp. Do I have a second? And we'll get the question. Second by Commissioner McCamey. Commissioner Isabelle, you're recognized.
Okay. First of all, I'm in support of keeping the court there, but I'm not in support of this motion because I ask these questions in operations. When you're in business, you count your pennies, and the dollars take care of themselves. So there's some other questions about who pays for the insurance on the building, who's paying for it, the deputies, who pays the workers' comp and all that, and that's the questions that I ask in operations. So right now, I'll be voting no until I get some more questions because I already spend taxpayer money above and beyond. That's the kind of things I want to know because if we're going to give, to put it in perspective, the City of Rocky Top has forty-seven percent people live under the poverty level. The City of Oak Ridge is around fourteen percent, and I think Clinton's around seven percent. So if we're going to give money to a municipality, let's be equal, that's all I'm asking, is let's be equal and look at things going forward. The mayor and the city manager came here hat in hand, talked about how depressed that the area was and was needing stuff, but going forward, I'll come up with something to try to help. But for right now, until I know exactly how much money we're spending, I'm in favor of the court staying there, but I'll just be voting no on this.
Right. So the motion is to approve this, we have had a contract with Oak Ridge, and that expired, so we are implementing a new contract. So this is, this is money for that court in Oak Ridge? Okay. Any other discussions?
It's for them, pay us.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, thank you. Commissioner Beauchamp? You want to go ahead?
Chairman?
Yes.
Just to clarify, there's not ever been a contract between Oak Ridge and Anderson County. There have been two resolutions passed by the City of Oak Ridge that funded General Sessions two. The last, the last one expired at the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Right now, perhaps a contract, perhaps a memorandum of understanding to go forward is needed, but we've never had a contract with them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Beauchamp?
I just wanted to clear it up, that a motion came out of operations as well, so we won't need to vote on that in operations if we're voting on it in budget.
That's what I was going to bring up as well.
Yeah. So you're saying we don't need to vote on this?
No, we need to vote on it now, and we just don't need to vote on it when it comes up.
Goes over there. Got you. Okay. All right. Commissioner Vow?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I want to thank Commissioner Beauchamp and all the Oak Ridge councilmen and all the county commissioners who met down in Oak Ridge for the workshop. I was very, very impressed with the effort that was put forth for everybody to actually sit down and talk about it. And I said this in the Budget Committee, I didn't see any bulldozers sitting outside. I didn't see anybody carrying around flames or anything, threatening to burn the building down if they didn't get their way. It was a concise meeting where everybody voiced their history of this project and their concerns with it. I understand what Jamie just said, and I understand there's legal terms that if you say it the wrong way, may have legal ramifications. But in my hillbilly terms, whether it was a memorandum of understanding, a contract, a resolution, a proclamation, whatever it was, it was an agreement between the county and the city, or the Oak Ridge Court wouldn't be sitting down there right now. So it was an agreement between us two entities to create this. I agree with Commissioner Isabelle. I never did think we needed to shut it down. What I wanted was for us to sit down and talk about what was a fair cost and a fair price that Oak Ridge should be paying for, as was the original agreement. That's always what I felt. I think Commissioner McCamey was on the same page with that. These discussions have been going on for four years. Whether they've been in this room or not, discussions have been going on for about three or four years. Thank God we got into the same room and had a discussion to where the discussions started. I don't want to back that up. I don't want to say or do anything that's going to reverse that progress that's been made. However, I think the fifty thousand dollar number is premature at this point. We don't have numbers in yet. When we get those numbers in, then maybe we'll have a number that we'll be able to use. So I'll be a no vote on this tonight until we can just get a more concise number in that we can start the process.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Capshaw?
Yes, so I just wanted, so we can clarify for people at home, the amount, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Beauchamp, was just to get a number that we could present to the City of Oak Ridge, just to get the conversations going on trying to negotiate an amount. to negotiate an amount that we can agree upon to operate General Sessions, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that because I'm sure people at home are like, oh, no, they're, you know, going to charge us, you know, $50,000 and stuff, I just want to clarify, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Barry?
Yes, has the city of Oak Ridge seen this number or anything like that?
Not yet.
So, whatever we vote on today won't make an agreement anyway. So, I would suggest we put it off until we've got an agreement and then vote on it.
All right. Commissioner Law Director Brooks, do you have something to say to that?
Well, you need parameters, and the parameters are kind of set. It's no secret that the county's asking for $50,000 a year. I mean, that's out in the public domain, so everybody, including Oak Ridge representatives, know about it. We've gotten, and every commissioner, I believe, has gotten this letter from Mayor Gooch, wanting some numbers on square footage, which we have and will provide to him. So, you're going to have your parameters at that point now. If we, if this body gives the law director's office the ability to negotiate where I don't need to come back to you every step along the way because you're going to have to approve it anyway, that might make things go faster. That doesn't, I mean, I guess that maybe speaks in favor of what Commissioner Beauchamp's got, we've got an opening amount. It would be nice if, you know, I had one commissioner and maybe the mayor, and I don't want to volunteer people to help with the negotiations, I think that would not be any problem with Toma or anything of that nature. And see if we can speed this along.
So, if this passes tonight, you're going to take it to the city of Oak Ridge?
Yes.
And say this is our, our proposal?
Yes.
If they accept it, then that will be?
That'll be it.
That'll be the MOU. If they say no, then we go back to the drawing board, you renegotiate, correct?
We go back to the drawing board, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Allen?
Just for clarity, are we saying, particularly Commissioner Beauchamp, that this will be set in concrete? If we put on this tonight, this is not set in concrete, we can still negotiate around that $50,000. But we want to kind of get something in place, get some kind of negotiating point to start from. So, this will not be set in concrete, and we just have some parameters starting at $50,000. Is that correct?
Commissioner Isabel?
Well, to me, if you say it's $50,000, it's $50,000. And I know it's set in a parameter, but what, I guess what you need to say is from zero to $50,000, I mean, if you're setting parameters. I'm still a no vote, though.
Okay. Commissioner Smallridge?
I voted against this motion in budget, but I've come, come around to the point that I, I think this is a starting point, and negotiations are going to maybe have to take place, and, well, they will have to take place, I'm sure, from what I've, just from what I've heard from the city. So, I'm, I'm going to support the motion, but with the understanding, or at least with the thought that this is going to be further negotiations on this, one way, that we don't know, for example, the $50,000 in, in, in the motion for building improvements, you know, that may be too high or too low for what we want, so I think it's still kind of open-ended, even though we use the number of $50,000 for the next, through night, 2030.
Thank you. Commissioner McCamey?
Question, I guess, from?
Father Maitreya, can I amend the motion that I seconded?
Are you seconded?
Okay, then I would like to amend the motion to make this, any, any negotiations go back for two years that the city of Oak Ridge has paid zero. We've not received anything since 2023, is that right?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay. I mean, they've actually paid nothing for two years, and they've been, they've had different amounts forwarded to them by law director, asking for it, and they've said no, you know, so it's been two years that we've got nothing, and I, I think that any negotiation should include that two years.
So, your motion is to include two years of back pay?
Yeah.
In addition to what was proposed?
Right.
Okay. We have a motion to amend, do we have a second motion on that amendment? A second on the amendment? We'll have to, Commissioner White seconds the motion. Does everybody understand what we're voting on, just the amendment? All right. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion fails. All right. The amendment, the motion now on the floor is the $50,000, one-time payment of $50,000, $50,000 for five years. And this will, is something that the law director will take and negotiate, begin negotiations with the city of Oak Ridge.
Correct.
Including the information that Commissioner Isabel and Commissioner Vowles has asked for to be included in those negotiations.
Yes.
Right, transportation costs, is, are you going to take that back, what he, what they have asked for since you're negotiating?
I have information, Commissioner Isabel, for most of what you've asked for, for you and Commissioner Vowles. So, I'll give that to you just as soon as the meeting's over, unless you want it now.
No, I can wait.
Okay.
All right. Commissioner Smallridge?
Madam Chairman, I don't know if you mentioned the $50,000 for building improvements as, as part of that motion, yes.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the reminder. Commissioner Allen?
Yeah, it seems like maybe we should have an amendment to this motion, because we're adding some things in this motion that the commissioners want, so is this appropriate time to offer an amendment that we add in the possible concerns of Commissioner Isabel and Commissioner Vowles? Because we're giving our law director a very open-ended way of negotiating without having some parameters around what we're talking about.
Okay. So, the law director has the information, he just, you have the information that they're asking for, correct?
I understand, based on the motion, I don't have any negotiating, I present an offer at this point.
So, I mean, would a, would a amendment be, be more appropriate now, or do we just keep throwing things up in the air for the law director to deal with?
Well, we just had an amendment. If you want to make an amendment, and we get a second and vote on it, we certainly can, but after that, we're going to move on and vote on this motion.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Do you want to make an amendment?
Yeah, I would like to amend this motion to include the parameters that Mr. Vowles and Isabel and Commissioner McCamey were concerned about. I, I think that we need to have some sort of parameters around what we're negotiating from. $50,000 is a good start, but there are some concerns that maybe I think we should amend this.
All right. Do we have a second on the amendment? Do we have a second? Amendment fails, second. Commissioner Capshaw seconds the amendment. All right. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor? Yeah, sir.
I had it lied on.
Oh, you want a discussion? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
I appreciate Commissioner Allen's efforts, but maybe I confuse people with what I was saying. We've got a dollar amount in this proposal. Until we get the numbers in, we won't know if that dollar amount is too high, too low, or just right. We can set all the different kind of parameters on the law director that we want, it's not going to accomplish the point that I was trying to make, was we need to wait until we get all of our numbers in so that we'll know what dollar amount to start the negotiation for. That's my point. I appreciate your efforts, I really do, but it's not accomplishing what my point was earlier now. I can't speak for Commissioner Isabel, but that, that, that was my, my point. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
All right. Do you want to withdraw your motion?
Sure, if it's not going to be helpful to you guys.
Commissioner Capshaw, is that good with you? Okay. So, the motion on the floor is to approve this $50,000, one-time, $50,000 a year for five years.
Madam Chairman, this is not working, I keep, like this one is speaking.
I had it, and it went away.
Okay.
I seconded the motion, but I think a deferral motion, since there's been so much discussion here, would be in order.
Okay, I agree.
And I don't know, again, Father Maitreya, can I make a motion to defer on a motion that I seconded? Okay, then I make a motion, we defer action on this for 30 days and come back with a...
Do we have a second on the deferral?
Second.
Second. All right, there's no discussion on deferral. All those in favor of deferring for 30 days, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say?
No.
Say that again, please. No.
No.
Let's go to the board and vote.
Let's go to the board and vote.
Board vote.
Breaking you in, right?
Y'all are killing me.
It's going to work.
We are voting to defer this for 30 days. When the yes or no comes up, yes means you want to defer, no means you do not want to defer.
Actually, it should be until our next meeting.
Until our next?
It may be 31 days, it may be...
Defer to full commission or?
Full commission, and we'll have those numbers by that time.
Yeah, it would need to go back to budget, since it can further.
We need to defer, not defer.
Wrong.
But the motion is to defer to full commission?
Right.
Okay. So, the motion is to defer to full commission. Next, I'm sorry?
Do you want me to reset the voting on this?
Uh, no, I don't, does anyone need to change their vote? You can still change your vote here. Commissioner Wondell, we need your vote.
Vote.
This is the deferral back to full commission. That would be the October meeting. There was eight yeses, seven nos, motion passes. So, it will be deferred to the October commission meeting.
All right.
I do have one other item under unfinished business for, the solar lots for Carroll Hollow and Highway 116 was deferred as well.
All right. Thank you.
That's it for me.
Thank you, Robbie.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
If you could speak on the 116 and the signs that we're talking about?
Oh, at this point?
If anybody's come down 61 and going to turn on to Main Street, when you see the signs that says, "No trucks, deter," that's what we need.
Okay.
Yeah.
Instead of the solar signs that spin, Benji?
That's exactly what we need right there.
Okay.
I think it works.
All right. Thank you for that. All right, next will be Director of Schools.
Dr. Parry couldn't be here tonight, he is at a superintendent's conference, so you have the written report, and I can take any questions except from Foster.
All right. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Isabel?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the school board, Dr. Parry, whoever put in the handicap ramp at Lake City Elementary, there was an issue about that, and it's already been taken care of, so thank you.
All right.
Any other questions or discussion for Mr. Gillivers? Nope. Nope, seeing none, thank you. All right. I'm, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Commissioner Wondell?
We're good.
Are you, do you have something?
We're good.
You're good? Okay, thank you. All right, let's take a break right here, let's take a eight-minute break, is that what you say, Commissioner? Let's take an eight-minute break here, and we'll begin with the law director's report. Thank you.
We got to break your being back, you know? We got to break your being back, you know? We got to break your...
We have 11, 12. All right. All right, next on the agenda is the Law Director's report. Mr. Brooks.
I'm going to skip down to the bankruptcies, and we just have a question there. In the past, we'd been reporting all bankruptcies that we received, and I know, Chairman, that was a point of concern for you. That number includes bankruptcies to which we are not owed anything in taxes and really don't have any basis for a claim. Now, we can continue to report all bankruptcies, or we can pull those out that do not bring the county into it as far as any potential loss. It is whatever commission wants.
All right. All right. So with that, let's let the commission think about that, and if they decide they want to make a motion to pull that off of your report, we'll do so in the future, if that's okay. Thank you for that clarification, though. Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. I hope that's helpful.
It did. Thank you.
All right. Then I'll skip to the, I guess, other or pending litigation. The CSX lawsuit, we can or don't have to join into it. It is something that's going to be dismissed. The Office of State Assessor of Property has determined that there's no merit to it, and so they're negotiating with the attorneys in Chattanooga who filed it to get it non-suited. Assuming that happens, great. Assuming it doesn't happen, do we want to reserve our ability to join in the lawsuit for the benefit of Anderson County, although I don't know exactly how much tax money's involved?
All right, so are you wanting a decision tonight on whether to join in, or...
Just if I'm given authority to join in if needed.
Okay.
That's all I'm asking for with regard to that.
All right. So Commissioner Anderson, you're making the motion to give him the authority to join in on that lawsuit if needed. All right. Commissioner Foster, second. All right, Commissioner Vow.
I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, I was wanting to speak on another item that's on his report. We can just go ahead and vote on this, and you'll come back to me, it'll be fine.
I sure will. Thank you. All right. Any discussion on the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Commissioner Vow, your question.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. On his report, you'll notice that item D6, he's got an item on there listed about the Aslinger Cemetery.
Yes.
To bring everybody up to speed on that, we have a cemetery in the 4th District that, in order to get to it, you have to get to Coal Creek Land Company?
That's, well, I think they call them Wind Rock, but that's...
Wind Rock, okay. And what they have done is they have leased that property to some hunters to allow them to hunt on their property. The hunters who have leased that property have put up a gate to where most can't get there. The problem we have is there's people over there that want to go to their ancestor's cemetery to upkeep and maintain the cemetery, and they're having to call the land company or the leases in order to arrange all that. So we asked the Law Director's Office to get a State Attorney General's opinion on whether or not they could do that. I think the State Attorney General's Office came back and said, "We ain't saying."
They're not, that's right.
Yeah, move on to C Task or someone else. So you've moved on to C Task, and they've given an opinion, and it's still pretty much saying the way that the leases are doing it is correct. So here's the problem I got, and I'm sure the Law Director's still working on it, I just want to bring everybody up to speed. There are many, many, many what we're going to call abandoned cemeteries in our county. As a matter of fact, the historian's office is working on the list, and I greatly appreciate Zach's help on that. The Sheriff's Office jail inmate work crew, over the last four or five years, under a resolution passed by this body, gave us the authority to go to abandoned cemeteries throughout the county. We'd eat them, mow them. Now, we can't go up there once a week and do it, but we go up and we try to help get them under control. I have a concern that if this C Task opinion winds up being the rule that we have to go by, we're going to have to rescind that resolution, because there may not be an issue moving forward with it, there may not be any other situations like this that we run across again, but apparently, according to the C Task opinion, the only way that anybody can legally go up there and take care of an abandoned cemetery is if we can prove we have ancestors that are buried in that cemetery. Now, that don't make any sense to me, but I understand sometimes lawyers' opinions don't make sense to me. But I just wanted to bring the board up to speed on this issue. I hope that it's not over yet, because if it is, it kind of puts us in a predicament as far as what we can do moving forward with a program that I think is very beneficial and needed in our county.
I think, Commissioner Vow, to speak to your question, and also the concerns Commissioner Isbell's had, it's all rolled up in what is reasonable access. And the access issue is resolved over 100 years ago, and I think that was in part of the basis of my letter to Wind Rock, and it's also in the C Task opinion. However, what's not clear is, is a gate reasonable? When is a gate not reasonable? Depends on the facts of the situation, and that's unfortunate. So we are still working on it. Whether we'll get anything resolved, I can't say, but we, files open, we're still plugging away at it.
Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And in his report too, it says the bill was introduced, Senate Bill 1936 and 2019, but it did not pass. That bill only proposed requiring access for family members and descendants of deceased persons buried in cemetery, cemetery plot owners, and persons engaged in genology research, provided to give reasonable notice to the owner of record or to the occupant of the property or both. Several states do have statutes, but what, if it's okay with all the members of operations in our governmental committee, is that I'm going to put it back on there, that we'll ask our state representatives to bring that back up again and find out, because this Senate bill really seems logical to me, and why did it fail? And that's what I'd like to know, is if we can get to them, you know, when they go back into session, they only get, I think, nine now that they can carry, but maybe we can get one of our state representatives to try to bring that back up.
All right. That sounds like a great idea.
And that would be good, Commissioner, because it would codify what the common law is now, and that's something I think we need.
Yeah.
All right.
Annette, did you get that? I'll send you an email.
Anything else in your report?
In your packet, you received a copy of a letter that was sent to somebody called Pixies, Inc., has to do with Senior Center. I really don't want to comment further on it, because there was a thread of litigation in the letter or in what they sent us. I think we've made our position clear, and we'll see if we hear anything else from them.
All right.
Nothing really of note in the litigation updates, other than the ZO bid protest case is consuming a lot of time right now. It's going to be on the docket for 1:00 p.m. on October 2nd. It would be great if we could get folks there to let everyone know the interest this county has in its bid process committee.
All right.
And that basically concludes what I had on my report. I think there may be other additions that have been made, and so I'll respond.
Any questions or discussion for the Law Director? Discussion or questions for the Law Director? I've seen none, let's move on to, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wondell, I didn't see that, sorry.
No problem. It's item F on the agenda.
Okay, yes, okay.
Claxton Kids Palace. Madam Chairman, I'm not interested in debating anything tonight. What I'm interested in is having the issue of Claxton Kids Palace, the easement, and any and all other items that need to be discussed, directed to the Legal Services Advisory Committee, where it should be discussed. And I'd like the Law Director to be present, and I'd like the Law Director to give his opinions, and I'd like to have the opportunity for the mayor to give all of her opinions and give her recommendations. I will answer one question. The one question is, what changed after August 2024, I think the question was? What changed was, the EPA regulation was no longer in effect. Thankfully, we had a new president, Donald J. Trump, who recognized that the EPA requirements on these utilities was out of order. So when I made that vote, I made it based on the comments and direction from TBA stating that it was required because of this EPA regulation. In fact, I think it's the same regulation that was discussed, maybe in the operations meeting at the end, if anyone wanted to give comments on it. I stand with my president on it. I don't believe EPA needs to put any regulations on these utilities unmandated. Anyway, so I'll make a motion to forward the Claxton Kids Palace subject to the Legal Services Advisory Committee, and request that the chairman call a meeting as quickly as possible.
All right.
That's my motion, and I'll click my motion button.
All right. We have a motion on the floor to refer this to Legal Services Committee, second by Commissioner Varin. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman.
You're welcome. Operations Committee, report.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. New River Water Line, Commissioner Wondell made a motion to ACWA pursue the TDEC AML Program Fee Grant and an IIJ AML Grant to finish the water lines up to Fort Mountain Church, second by Commissioner Anderson. Motion passed unanimously, it's forward to full commission for approval.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Isbell, second by Commissioner Varin. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye. I'm sorry, sorry, Commissioner Wondell, I'm struggling, I'm sorry about that.
Chairman, you're doing fine for the first time. It's not an easy job, and I have no complaints whatsoever.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I guess I just want to make a point again, that there is funds released in 2010 and 2012 for this water line to be installed up to Fort Mountain Baptist Church on New River Highway. It was never extended that far, and again, it's another situation where funds were given to our... And again, it's another situation where funds were given to our utility, and it, it was never completed. You know, my question would be, you know, you hear so many different things. Well, the chlorine would be bad because it would set so long. And, you know, I, I guess I would wonder if that's the case today, why wouldn't it have been the case then? But, um, we'll, 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 we'll ask those questions, but I, I certainly hope we did, we pass this motion and send a strong message to Anderson County Water Authority and the board that they genuinely take some time to review the situation and develop a strategy. I, I'm under the impression that TDEC will fund this. They'll fund it all. You know, Commissioner Beauchamp is the one that got me involved with Mr. Otis out there, and, uh, she's the one that said, hey, can you call Otis? Yeah, it was Commissioner Beauchamp that got me involved, and I was happy to do so. And I'm glad to have met Otis Phillips. He's a good man, and so is that region. And, uh, I'm looking forward to it, Madam Chairman, and I'll be supporting this. And I hope, uh, for everyone else, if you can show up tomorrow night, Anderson County Water Authority, 5 o'clock at the Anderson County Water Authority Board Meeting, we need people there to speak up for these residents. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Anderson County Government 2026 holiday schedule, Commissioner Foster made a motion to approve the schedule, seconded by Commissioner Wondell, motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Foster, second by Commissioner Capshaw. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, next, what was added was the 116 report. Commissioner Val, myself, and along with Commissioner Wondell and several other commissioners that was there, got an opportunity to speak with Lieutenant Governor McNally. And if it would please this panel, I would like for Commissioner Capshaw to read the letter that was forwarded. She's actually traveled that road, so she, she knows exactly.
All right.
Lieutenant Governor McNally, Deputy Governor.
Is it Ely or Eli? Ely, relayed your concern with the current one-lane section of State Route 116 in Anderson County. This is an issue that our team is actively working to address, as we know the importance of this route. This lane closure stems back to a rain event in mid-March where drainage failure above the road directed water to a field slope across the road that subs, subs, oh, I can't talk. Subsequently failed due to oversaturation. As you are aware, we currently have the location in a one-lane temporary traffic signal controlled situation. We have been working to design our repair with a specific focus on mitigating our environmental permitting needs so as to expedite the repair. We also have two tracks of road that will need to be acquired for this project. As soon as we have clarity on the necessary environmental permitting, we should have a better sense for timeline on this repair. We will work with, we will work to keep you and your constituents up to date on this repair project as it continues to progress. Please let us know if you have any questions. Thanks. Jay Klein, Director of Legislative Affairs with TDOT.
Madam Chairman, would it be okay for Commissioner Capshaw just to comment? She's traveled that road recently.
Um, so I went last month, I rode around and, um, did a tour of our county roads to see the, uh, state of the roads. And I was on 116 and rode with our highway department superintendent, Gary Long. And when I rode along State Route 116 as we were going up the mountain, I said, Gary, where are the guardrails? I, um, we need that, that road fixed and repaired, and I, I traveled and went along that road. And I wouldn't want my child, I don't have kids, but my nieces or nephews riding on a school bus on that road and it not be fixed. So I really feel like this is a, um, important project that we need funding for to get it fixed.
Thank you. You're welcome. Commissioner Val.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I know that I have spoken a few times here tonight, and I'm going to try to make this.
Can I stop you just one second? Just one second. Is there, do you need a motion from us on this?
No, that was for information only, actually.
For information only?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Val.
I respect the job that each county commissioner sitting up here tonight does. I don't think a lot of people know what we do. Uh, they think they may, but when they're looking behind the scenes, I think they'll learn that it's a little bit different than what they thought. I know the first time I got elected to county commission, my first couple of months, my eyes were wide open. Those of us who serve in rural districts, I think, and maybe I'm wrong about this, but I think our job sometimes is a little bit different than commissioners that have a blessing of serving more in city districts. When it comes to street repairs, usually you have a city that, that helps you with that. When it comes with water and sewer lines, you may have CUB that helps you with that. Folks over in New River and up in Bryceville and down through Fradable and down through Medford don't have that luxury. So they call us to voice their concerns and voice their problems and want us to try to help them do that. A lot of times, I know Commissioner Isbell does this, we make a phone call and we get lucky and the problem solved. Those are great days when we can solve a problem that quickly. It's difficult when we've got to call another department who can say, no, we're not going to do that. For whatever reason it may be. It may be money, it may be whatever reason they've got, they tell us no. I don't know about you, but I hate it when I've got to call a constituent back and say, I'm sorry. I can't do what you asked. I feel like a failure when I have to make those phone calls. So I, I keep trying, and I keep trying, and I keep trying, and I keep trying, and I try not to do that. What I've learned down through the years is some of those problems ain't just going to be solved by me making a phone call. It's going to be me coming to you all, or the mayor's office, or whomever, and say, I need some help with this problem. And then usually when we bind together to solve the problem, that's when things start getting done. That's when we move mountains, that's when we part oceans. We've got a lot of problems going on in our district. We'd appreciate your help trying to solve those problems.
All right. There's not a motion on the floor, so that was just for, okay, what is your motion? Commissioner Wondell.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to accept a letter from Lieutenant Governor and Commissioner Ely from TDOT to insert into the minutes. I so move.
You heard the motion, second by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion on the motion? This is just putting the minutes in, or the letter into the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chairman, uh, having the minutes, having things recorded in the minutes, very valuable. Because when we go back and do research from 20 years ago, we're finding out, you know, sets us in a different direction. So it's very important, and I appreciate every, Commissioner Wondell doing that and everybody supporting it. But just, just for information, this was on WAT and then the news, okay? We're talking about Rosedale, New River 116. Now we're talking about Newfoundland Gap reopened weeks ahead of schedule on Friday. The Great Smoky Mountains National Park announced. The park previously shared that the road was expected to reopen by the end of month following extensive repair work after road washout at the beginning of August. Said on Friday the road would reopen by 4:00 PM on September 12th, which is 18 days ahead of schedule. Look how many months we've been.
February.
February. That concludes Operations Committee report.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner McCamey.
And we're always the very last thing on the agenda. And I'd like to see that changed somehow because these people, several people here that were at operations waiting on this report, you know, to come up. And we are, we, we've been on the very rear end right before new business, right before we adjourn. And these people have to sit here all that time, and I, I feel like it needs to be moved up somewhere, maybe right under budget. Since that's the two major things, because now we've added, what, legislative and intergovernmental to the Operations Committee, and I, I don't feel like these people need to sit here all night long and, and, you know, fast their bedtime just to, to get to hear what we've got to say about an item that was discussed in operations. And I don't know whether I need to make a motion to that effect and under new business or, but it, I mean, it has to do with operations. That's why I'm speaking now.
Okay, um, so we have a format or rules, so that would probably be something that would need to be taken up in the Rules Committee. If you'd like to send that to the Rules Committee to be discussed.
I'll make that informal motion, send it to Rules Committee for consideration.
All right, and, uh, we have that motion, second by Commissioner Wondell, to send that request to Rules Committee. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Fire Commissioner report.
Madam Chairman, I missed the Fire Commission report. I had a conflict. I think Commissioner Anderson attended. I didn't really notice any motions of substance, but I'll defer to Commissioner Anderson if he has anything to add. He, he ran the meeting.
All right, thank you.
Didn't have a forum, so didn't, didn't make her take action, but, uh, Chairman Palmer was there and, um, with some information that she gave to the president.
Um, I do have one question, if I may. I noticed that there was some addition to the Fire Commission minutes. Did you catch that? I did, was that something that you all took up?
Uh, I think Chief Mittsfield probably just took them, when they, the ones that were there just read the report. They didn't, wasn't any action. I think he just submitted that, that as notes.
Okay, thank you. Next would be the opioid settlement committee report.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, we did take, the only action item we had was the resolution, and we took action on that earlier this evening. Uh, just kind of announcement to everyone, we did receive the needs assessment for the county from the, uh, from UT and with help from ASAP and, uh, also a few other local, um, agencies. So if anyone would like a copy of that needs assessment, I think I did email it out to all the commissioners, but if you didn't get it, or if I missed your name, then feel free to contact me and I'll forward that to you. And that is the end of our report. Our next meeting will be October 14th, uh, for the new members and for the old members too. October 14th at 4:30 in room 118A.
Thank you. Under name business, next on the agenda is the vacancy of District One Commission.
Yes, Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion that.
We open that up and that post it and, um, accept applications, and she sends them to us as we get them in. All right. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, second by Commissioner Allen. We have a, uh, discussion, Commissioner, Commissioner Smallridge?
No, I had, she, she beat me to it.
Okay, gotcha, okay. Um, Commissioner Wondell, did you have a?
I was just begging a motion for Commissioner.
Gotcha, okay. So the, the motion was by Commissioner Wondell, second by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to announcements. Do we have any announcements?
Yes, Commissioner Smallridge.
Yeah, I wanted to, earlier tonight, a gentleman mentioned, uh, leukemia cat virus and that apparently our, um, animal department had discontinued testing on that. And I wonder if I could ask the mirror to at some point give us a report on, yeah, on that.
Sure, I'll ask about that, so, and that was the first I've been made aware. So I know that Damon works with Dr. Garrett, so I'll, I'll find out. My understanding is that, like, if we send any cat to PetSmart, it does have to have that. But I'll verify all that, see what Young Williams is doing, see what their reasoning is, and definitely look in and report to you.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Capshaw.
Okay, I'm gonna do this real quick. Okay. Um, I just want to thank, um, everyone in the county that came out and supported the Scarborough 85. Um, they had a denim diamonds and pearls, um, gala that was very, it was phenomenal. And I'm sorry if you missed it, be prepared to participate and help, um, next year, but I just wanted to give them a shout out. Um, I want to also thank Sheriff Barker, the Anderson County Sheriff's Department, and the inmates at the Detention Center who welcomed me two weeks ago. I got to do a tour. I think I was there for about four hours, and they also served me lunch that was delicious. Um, they were telling me about different, um, needs that they, they had, as well as the new program, um, in the kitchen, where they are now making hot meals three times a day. And if I'm not mistaken, you said we're now saving 80 cents a meal with them doing that, I believe.
Yeah, I had it in front of me.
So I just wanted to thank, wanted to say thank you for, um, everyone welcoming with open arms and just talking to me and letting me know what things they have going on. My last one is, I cannot do this without saying a happy, um, coming up a happy 105th birthday for my cousin Clara Jewel Hall, well Clara Jewel Kurd Hall Hughes, um, that was from Oliver Springs. She now lives in Knoxville. Um, she is a member of the Oliver Springs Historical Society and has been doing it for over 60 years. And still moving around, still going to church, still going to Bible study. And so I have to tell her a happy birthday. She'll celebrate it on the 28th, and we're going to have a big celebration on the 27th. So thank you all for allowing me that.
Thank you. Commissioner Allen.
Yes, um, thank you, Madam Chairman. The Oak Valley Baptist Church is hosting their sixth annual community Christmas store on December the 13th, and they're asking for donations. It is for, to empower underprivileged families in the community and give parents an opportunity to involve in selecting gifts for their children. They also are, they have a price range of various items. And the sponsorships are sponsor a specific age group, and then sponsor, it's, it, the corporate sponsorship is $500 and a monetary donation to the Christmas store. And this can be made in person or online or by mail, sending the mail to 194 Hampton Road, Oak Ridge, Tennessee. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Isbell.
Yeah, the softball game has been moved to November the 15th. And I think Commissioner Foster may be pitching for the city of Clinton, and I'll be playing for the city of Rocketup.
If I play, I'll be playing for the county team, not the city team.
Commissioner Varen.
I will not be pitching.
Yes, I wanted to, uh, repeat, uh, the All Abilities Fair in Oak Ridge on October 18th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM is for anyone with disabilities or mobility problems, things like that. Uh, there's going to be activities, information on all sorts of different, uh, products available. And, uh, I understand the county's going to have a booth there. We want to welcome everybody in from all around the area. I had one lady inquire from Greenville, said she's going to come, you know, so. It was a big event two years ago. We expect it to be even bigger. There's going to be legal aid. People talking about, uh, living in places, people get older, you know, staying in their homes and stuff like that. I think it's going to be a real big thing. It's going to take over the Civic Center, the New Conference Center, and part of the Senior Center.
Wow.
And the parking lots.
Awesome.
So we even rented the high school parking lot.
Okay. Thank you. Any other announcements? Motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
We got rented Tyler now.